We're dealing with a public health crisis in St. Paul when it comes to opioid overdoses. And there's not a single person in City Hall who sits on City Council or sits in the mayor's office who is a public health professional and has worked with the people who are suffering. You know, I have been at encampment support meetings. I've done mutual aid. I've been at encampment evictions. That's actually the first place I met Melvin Carter. I met Mayor Carter at an encampment eviction. There's no one in this race who has spent more time in the neighborhood, addressing the problems of the neighborhood than I have.
We're rolling. We are rolling.
This is a real, real thing. Real, real thing.
I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the Wedge Neighborhood right now, right now, right now, right now, right now, right now, right now.
Okay, here we are. We're entering St. Paul on the Wedge Live podcast. Is this a first? I can't remember. I don't think the podcast has ever been to St. Paul. I'm here with Cole Hanson. There's a special election for Ward 4 City Council in St. Paul, and Cole Hanson is one of the candidates. Thank you for riding with me and showing me around St. Paul.
Yeah, I'm really excited. This is one of the routes I run every week. So it's familiar to me. Hopefully, it'll become familiar to everybody else.
Hopefully, we can lose the car traffic at some point. We're crossing the Marshall Avenue Bridge? Or is this the Lake Street Bridge?
We can call it the middle.
So what's going on in St. Paul? What are the big issues in Ward 4?
From my perspective and the folks I talk to at The Doors, it's affordability. You know, I'm a renter myself, so affordability when it comes to rents, it's getting pretty challenging. Even for homeowners, property taxes are climbing at a really outrageous rate. I've talked to folks where their year-over-year property taxes have gone up 60%. And it's just, it's boxing people out of homeownership. It's boxing people out of apartments. It's getting tough.
What's, are we turning left here?
Yep, so I want to turn left here.
Okay.
Because then it'll get us down to the riverway.
So I'm going to be doing some episodes on Summit Avenue. That's not in Ward 4, right?
Oh, it is. Summit Avenue is pretty unique. It has its own organization called SARPA. It's an old George Latimer project. Because it runs through so many different wards in St. Paul, there's no way to keep a, you know, there wasn't a way to keep a single vision. Yeah, we'll go south here.
So why is that not settled? Why are we not done with that?
Well, I think there's a couple of reasons. Number one, you know, the folks are interested in historic preservation. They got a good point. You know, it's the longest stretch of Victorian housing in the U.S., from my understanding. And it's pretty unique. And a lot of the trees, I mean, we can take Summit Avenue if you like.
No, I'm going to be riding Summit Avenue with another person, and it's a miserable bike lane. And so I don't want to, I don't want to ride it any more than I have to.
Well, and that's exactly it, right? Is, you know, I took my daughter to Grand Old Day this last year, and she was in the bike trailer, and she was bouncing around left and right. The bike lane, you're right. It's not, it's not good for anybody. And there's folks worried about the health of 900-some trees. It's a toss-up. The biggest thing for me is that the city hasn't been entirely honest with anybody in the area with regards to disclosures. There was just a recent lawsuit against the city about documents and disclosures related to the project. And the city lost.
Yeah, but that's a data practices issue. And obviously, as Chet Wedgely, your chief meteorologist here at Wedge Live, I believe in disclosure. But that's a separate issue from like, will the project take out all the trees? Any street reconstruction project threatens trees by definition because you're digging up the street. So will you be a council member who supports projects like that? What do you think of the project?
I mean, look, I'm looking forward to safer Summit to ride on my bike. You know, at this point, the project's gone through the county. It's gone through Metro. It's gone through the Met Council. It was approved almost unanimously by the last council. I'm not sure what the next Ward 4 council member is going to be able to do about it to change it. Ongoing projects? I don't know. A city is made for people. So if we're not looking at our infrastructure from the perspective of how can we use it to support people, then what are we building it for? You know, we need to make sure that our streets are safe, our bike paths are safe for everybody. If we can save trees and make positive impacts, you know, plant more trees, it's great. We shouldn't tear them down if it's unreasonable. But, you know, we gotta, we gotta build for the people who live here and the people who are going to live here next.
Yeah. So have I nailed you down on whether you're for it or against it? Or are you saying like, it's not relevant to who the next Ward 4 council member is?
I'm not sure if it's going to be relevant because it feels like the door is already closed on it.
So for people, but for people who are like, I want to know what this guy is going to be like if a controversy, because street projects are always controversial. So if it won't be this one, it'll be the next one. So I think people, it would be useful to know, how would you, how would you have decided on this one?
Well, I mean, I think if we can make minimum impact, that's ideal. You know, I think of the, just kind of the cost savings we get from not tearing up the entire street, trying to tear all this stuff and make it different. But at the same time, like, we're on this bike path right now. It's not ideal compared to a well-maintained road. You can just look at the difference between the two. So, I mean, I don't know. When I think about the Cleveland Avenue project over near the U of M, you know, that's a different story. Because that was a lot of infrastructure that needed to be fixed, sorted out in a relationship with the University of Minnesota, and all the trees were replanted right away. You know, it's...
Do you think this, so, do you think this project will be handled any differently? Like, we haven't even gotten to it.
Well, I hope so.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's the thing, is I hope so. It's a, it's a big opportunity.
Right. What do you, how do you feel about the I-94 Twin Cities Boulevard?
Now that, it's something I'm, I'm pretty excited about. I mean, I'm a big supporter of the Twin Cities Boulevard. Because it's a river of poison, I'm a public health educator. If you live near the freeway, your life's shorter. And for our black neighbors and folks who, you know, descend from Rondo, they were robbed by the people who built the freeway. So, you know, the Twin Cities Boulevard, for me, is not only a bold opportunity to try something different, to remove this really, really dangerous part of our city, but it's also a way to reconnect our city. You know, the safest way to get north and south in Ward 4 on your bike is either Fairview or a pedestrian bridge somewhere along the way. It's never crossing one of the major streets. And Fairview is only safer because it goes under the freeway. Anything that goes over the freeway is treacherous. It's noisy. Cars are speeding by. I've liked what I've seen out of open streets. And I'm frustrated. I was in the Pioneer Press a couple of times, talking about the impact of 94 on my family. I used to, I used to live closer to it. I could hear it in my sleep. I think the least we could do is have MnDOT study and provide the information we need to know whether the Twin Cities Boulevard is viable. Because they asked us. They put it on the table.
Yeah, the way it feels like MnDOT is running away from the very real public health problem, the pollution problem, the poison problem, doesn't even want to acknowledge the trade-offs, has me concerned. Another thing that has me concerned is this rain. Are you a zoning reform guy?
To what extent? We already, we already just did a whole bunch of it.
Did that guy scold us for not being in the street?
Uh, probably.
What is the rule? I'm not familiar.
Well, the striping and the signage is not necessarily clear. In some parts of this trail, it is bike and pedestrian. In some parts, it's not. There's a bike lane on one side of Mississippi River Boulevard, but not on the other. Lots of fundamental challenges.
Okay. I hope he didn't see your yard sign because it could spoil your campaign.
Well, what do you do?
Cole Hanson here menacing pedestrians. I totally blanked on your zoning reform answer. I hope it was a good one.
Well, no, I, well, the question for me is, what more reform? Because we've already readjusted our entire zoning code a few years ago.
So you think we're in a good place?
I think we're in a good place. I think there's some spots to touch and adjust. But I don't think we're in a revolutionary change everything phase.
Okay. And you think the changes that were made were good ones?
Probably speaking. I mean, I, you know, the, the thing I'm a fan of is the traditional zoning category. You know, I like that it's framed as traditional, meaning this is how things used to be, which is you would have corner stores.
Yeah.
You would have corner grocery. You know, you travel to any city that people, you know, always rant and rave about. Your Berlin's, your Paris, your London. The place that people like living there, and those places are livable because you don't have to take a train, take a bus to go to a grocery store. You got your Corner Spethy. You've got your corner store. You know, you go wherever you need to. It's right there. And it used to be this way in St. Paul. You know, you can actually look around and see old corner stores that had been converted to duplexes or housing because when the business closed, they couldn't keep running it as a business.
So this is not a great path, and also, I wouldn't want to be in that bike lane.
It's an exact example of what I'm talking about. I mean, you look at, and we got someone coming up here, right?
Is there a shelter we can take?
One of the main things I talk about with folks.
Is there shelter we can take anywhere close by to cover up?
Yeah, there's a, once we get to Ford.
I'm going to hide under this tree. The Cub Foods closure in the Midway, that's, is that in Ward 4?
Sure is.
Well, that's a real shame. I'm big on grocery stores and transit. And I saw a story where a man in a little motorized wheelchair, been in one for decades. And like, the story was like, distance matters to this, this man. Every day, he leaves his home, and if you, he can't just drive to the next nearest grocery store. What do you, what do you do? I think I saw municipal grocery stores listed as a priority on your website. Did I see that?
Yeah, I mean, municipal grocery stores, I mean, just talking grocery and transit, you know, first off. I mean, in Ward 4, we have two really good examples and two really bad examples of grocery store and transit. Two really good examples, we have Aldi at Lexington and University, which is not oriented towards the train, but is right next to the train platform. Very easy to get in, get out. Next, you have Fresh Time over a little bit further to the west, closer to Minneapolis. Might even be in Minneapolis. It's pretty close, but it's right on the edge. You know, you would notice if you just hopped on the train and hopped off. Because you hop off the train and you walk into a grocery store. Very easy. The two that are bad examples of transit and grocery stores are The Cub Foods, it's closing, and Target. They are, they're oriented towards a suburban community. They have huge parking lots in front of them. And they're, you know, a half or quarter mile away from the transit platform, even though they're right at the Hamlin Station. So, you know, there's, there's right ways to do it and wrong ways to do it. And I'm proposing municipal grocery because not only is it a way for us to democratically do it the right way, but the rules and statutes are already written in Minnesota law for municipalities to run businesses. I mean, you look at municipal liquor, the same, I mean, the same rules are applying to municipal cannabis up in Anoka with some adjustments. There's no reason we couldn't, as a city, scratch out liquor and replace it with grocery and run it in a way that is not necessarily the same as any traditional grocery model, but is run to meet the needs of our residents, like we build our water infrastructure to meet the needs of our residents.
So I'm a little bit, there's a lot of people who are skeptical of this, and I think I'm among them. I don't mind studying it. Like, obviously, food deserts are a real problem. And like, the people who want to study it are not bad or wrong for wanting to study it and try to solve the problem. Just like, the idea that maybe a city could run a grocery store of the quality of Aldi, I am skeptical of that. Aldi is my gold standard for grocery stores.
Well, you guys got a nice one over there.
Yeah.
It's a nice, it's a nice one.
But then, you know, there are food deserts who would take literally anything.
And I think that's, that's something where, you know, on your side of the river, you know, I think the questions that the Minneapolis City Council is asking, especially around the community Cedar Riverside, the University of Minnesota, is really important. Because that is a food desert for, you know, your private grocery. You've got small community grocers. You've got grocers to serve the East African community, right? But there's not a lot of single serve, this is where I go get to my groceries, or to places near the U. That's one of the reasons why, it sounds like, you know, Councilmember Wansley is looking into it because her constituents are asking. In St. Paul, we look at our downtown, and we have folks who live down there. They work down there, especially with the governor's return to work mandates, you know, for state workers. And there's no private grocery down there at all, other than maybe one or two corner stores in the entire downtown. There's nothing serving that community. And people move down there on the premise that it would be walkable, that they could age in that place and have a walkable, engageable community. And now they're left schlepping all the way to Lexington or to the suburbs to spend their money elsewhere. You know, there's no competition. I think that's what makes it a really unique proposition to study. I'm not saying we have to do it. I'm saying we need to ask the question and investigate it. We need to give the idea a try because nothing else is working. Because there's no competition. Any other city, you might be looking at competing with private grocery. In downtown St. Paul, there's nothing. It's a perfect opportunity to try something new.
Are there other, other ways to do this aside from municipal grocery store? Let's say the study shows this is, this would be really difficult and unlikely to succeed. Where would you go next to try to fix the problem?
Well, I mean, you can, the city's already trying to entice private grocers to come. That's a conversation I've had in the background with a couple of council members already. It's a mixed result. They're, they're working on it. You know, there's, there's reaching out to the co-op. You know, that's one thing many people have come to me about. It's like, hey, why don't we reach out to the co-op? But they have business interests too. You know, if Mississippi, Mississippi market wanted to be there, they could be. But they're not because it probably doesn't make sense for them and their business model. We look at the St. Paul Farmers Market, an incredible opportunity to engage with local farmers, local growers, and especially, you know, among farmers in Ramsey County. And that's also on the other side of downtown. So are we going to pick up an entire farmer's market, move it to that location? Is there a way to coordinate that sort of thing? And how do we keep it affordable? Again, I think there's lots of different options. People have been working on food security in St. Paul in Ramsey County for years and years and years. I used to sit on the Food and Nutrition Commission with the county. There's a lot of great champions who've been working on it. But we've never had a chance to try something different like this because the crisis was so bad. I, I think it just, we gotta give a bold option a try, at least a consideration. Because worst thing that happens, a business is going to come in and fill the spot while we're looking. That's the worst thing that happens. Best case scenario, we succeed. But the folks who live down there deserve us trying.
Do you think it's let up? Do you think we can proceed?
Seems like it.
Okay, let's do that. I'm still shaken up from getting scolded. Deeply shaken up. There's no scolding like St. Paul path scolding, I think.
You know, we're tough but fair. It's, you know, I always say Minneapolis is a little big city. St. Paul's a big, small town. Our politics and demeanor work out that way.
So rent control, St. Paul tried it and has been, you've been the poster child in Minneapolis for why we should never, ever do it. And do you defend the way it was done? Do you think it should have stayed the way it was when it was first implemented?
I think we can't, yeah, we can't talk about rent stabilization without talking about the whole story of it. I mean, first, the premise, it's unaffordable to rent here. People are getting extreme rent hikes. That leads to a referendum, huge turnout, vote succeeds. City Council is left to figure out how to interpret the vote, passes an ordinance, ordinance taken to court. You know, and in order to preempt that decision, right, the council amends it. Most of those folks don't run again. You get a new council come in. Rent stabilization has been changed. And due to pressure from developers, it's changed again, it was changed again this spring. So the last, the least stable thing about rent stabilization itself is the policy itself. It's changed so much. And when you talk to businesses, the last thing they like is massive policies changing every six to eight months.
Right, but what they, what they hate even more was the most stringent rent stabilization policy in the country, I think. Was it right to start with the most stringent possible policy?
I mean, I work, you know, I worked in sales for a long time. You don't open, open from a weak bargaining position. And I think that's, you know, you can always scale back, but you can't always scale up. And so I think if you have to start from somewhere, that's a safe place to start. You know, that said, with the recent changes, you know, I've been asked, okay, well, what will, what will have you supporting changes to rent stabilization, rent control? Show me the building, you know, and we've seen reporting, you know, in the Star Tribune and Axios, from these developers saying that now, you know, Minneapolis, they're going to artificially slow down building so that way they can raise rents on the buildings they have. You know, they were complaining about rent stabilization over here. But one rents, once rent stabilization was removed for new builds, which it was always very lax on new builds, 20 years of nothing. You know, now that that's, that's permanent, now they're claiming that they won't build because of our labor costs. You know, we have a strong union trades community here in St. Paul. And they, these developers don't necessarily want to pay union wages. They're complaining about, you know, materials costs now. Which, you look at the Trump administration, yeah, they threaten tariffs on everybody. Costs are going up. So I just, I think if it wasn't going to be rent stabilization, it's going to be the same argument they're using in Minneapolis, which is we're not going to build because of labor costs, because of interest rates, because of material costs.
I mean, but those, all those things are, I don't know about labor costs, but like, interest rates and materials costs is a real thing. And rent stabilization or no, we probably wouldn't be building much right now. Right?
I mean, it's a long-term investment. If it makes sense to make the, make the investment, you make the investment.
But interest rates are long, interest rates are long-term.
Sure, but most of these buildings are built on a five-to-10-year note. They're not built on like a 30-year mortgage. They're on revolving credit. They're rolling over these loans and different loans. And the buildings themselves are chopped up into investment vehicles to generate more revenue on the stock market. So it's not, it's not like a family paying off their mortgage. It's a business navigating an asset and flipping and moving around the assets as it can generate more revenue.
So is rent stabilization one of those things that is settled and like, we move forward? Or are there changes you want to see or are promising in your campaign?
I am not promising any changes. I am promising wait and see. You know, the, like I said, the least stable thing about it has been the policy itself. And I've talked to a number of council members who said, look, we need to let this thing cook for a while. We need to see what the effects are. We can't keep coming back to it because it's also a very acrimonious fight. It tears a lot of people apart, and that's the last thing I want to be doing. So, you know, I think we leave it where it is and see what happens next. Will we get the development and building that's promised? Will we see it retreat any further? What do we have in store for St. Paul? There's only one way to find out. Now, the alternative here is that we, instead of waiting for developers, we build this stuff ourselves. You know, I've been, and the big thing I've been a proponent for is a social housing model that is being used quite successfully in Dakota County, where they put in 1,600 units of housing over the last 10 years that is owned and maintained by the county. It's not run like your public housing is. It serves a variety of needs, seniors, affordable housing. They have townhomes. They have apartments. But the difference is it's democratically controlled. Who's in charge? You know, they are treating their housing that they are building like they treat their water. They have a development committee that is commissioners and residents and neighbors who are determining the future of their housing rather than a stockholder meeting.
So I've heard a lot of good things about that, and it makes me wonder like, what are the downsides? Why are, why are more local governments not taking up that model? Why, why do you think that is? Can you explain what people see as the downsides?
Well, I think there's always something to be said about caution and moving in a conservative financial direction. You know, it's a, it's a gamble, it can feel like, right? We're so privileged to have a successful example nearby because we can pick up that model and run with it. For a long time, I don't think people were willing to give local government a thought. And let's turn left here.
Going on the street?
Yeah, let's do that. Yeah, so I don't think people were willing to give local government the chance to be a doer like this, like this. You know, a lot of times, local government is seen as reacting, you know, oh, we got this crisis or that. We can move on to the bridge and take the bike path over here.
Are we going back to Minneapolis? What is this bridge?
So this is the Ford Avenue Bridge. So this is, actually, if we want to pause here, this is actually one of the big, big fights right now, is the Highland Bridge project.
Is it still a fight?
It's a fight because the developer, Orion, Orion has made it one. So rent stabilization.
Over the very like strip mall style development that they got approved recently?
Yep, so that's one of the pieces of it. They've also, and that's in spite of receiving a bunch of tax increment financing, or TIF, from the city. You know, it's meant to be this tool of last resort for development. But in St. Paul, it's this, it's become this poison pill that we are asked to swallow every time we want a new building. And this entire site is fueled by and funded by TIF to the point where, you know, we've cut our legs out from under us on property taxes, giving it away to a developer to please develop the site. You know, long term, maybe it'll be worth it. But if people's property taxes are going up 65% every year, you know, 25 to 65, we're going to have, this thing's not going to be paid off by the time we've lost a lot of our legacy residents to neighbors, neighboring cities.
I remember the fight over whether it would get built at all, the whole site. And yeah, how much is there left to build?
I feel like we're probably looking at about a third of the project, if I had to guess. It's not in Ward 4, so.
A third is completed or a third left to go?
Probably a third. If I had to guess, just from riding around it and getting to know it, I, I go to the doctor over there. It's right on the A-line. It's very convenient. You know, it looks like there's still about a third left, but it's not in Ward 4. It hasn't been a big thing that I'm focusing on day to day.
Is it where that CVS, the CVS, is that in Ward 4 that's notorious?
It's smack dab in the middle. Yeah.
And it closed, right?
Yeah, it's been closed three years.
And it's become a problem and a controversy and a lot of livability concerns, homelessness and addiction, right at the center of that. How do you deal, obviously, getting people housed, providing services is important. What do you say to people who live near it and have livability concerns? Who want, who see it as an emergency that needs to be solved like right now? How do you solve it right now?
Well, my, my ex lives at Snelling University. I live at Fairview Union University. So we're the folks who are living right next to it. We want to solve it right now because my daughter's six and I don't feel comfortable taking her on the train, certainly not getting off at the Snelling Avenue Station. Fairview is different. Hamlin's different, but Snelling is something else. What do we do? I mean, there's a couple of different places to look. First, you got to look at the blight from CVS. They've been squatting on this property, and they pay only, I think, like $7,000 a year in vacancy fees to keep it closed and vacant. Trash blows around. They put up a big chain link fence because people were camping in the parking lot. You know, so holding them accountable through citations, which is a ballot measure we have to approve in November, is really important because we don't have any tools really, other than the vacancy fees to hold them accountable.
Is the ballot measure inspired by the CVS issue or?
No, the ballot measure is inspired by people who do not want the city to leverage fines against organizations or people. We had to make a charter change in St. Paul to allow that to happen. And as things go, some people didn't want that to happen, and so it's a ballot measure, and it'll be resolved in November.
So it's people who don't want fines and fees levied against vacant properties?
Vacant properties, businesses, yeah.
So you're trying to stop a thing that would stop enforcement?
Enforcement tools.
Is that pushed by landlords?
I, I'll be honest, I don't know whose interest it is to not have the city enforcing its own ordinances.
I mean, is there no shadowy group behind this, or is it just like?
I think it's people who are just, you got your conservatives.
Libertarians?
Your right-wingers who are afraid of the, of big government.
Somebody got one too many, you didn't shovel your sidewalk citations, and like, this is unconstitutional.
Yeah, I mean, what do you do? But, so you know, there's the, the actual CVS itself, right? But the CVS is part and parcel of the larger problem, which is, you know, homelessness and addiction in, in St. Paul and in the Twin Cities. I mean, fentanyl's devastating. And I mentioned I lost my mom to it. It doesn't take a lot, and it's infiltrating a lot of recreational drugs. And fentanyl's unlike any other drug people take. It's, it's so potent for the amount that you need. It's very cheap. It's very accessible. It's very quick to get addicted to. And so when we talk about And so when we talk about, you know, public safety, that's when I talk about public health approaches. I mean, you're not going to get people sober by slapping cuffs on them and giving them tickets. Or, and you're not going to get people, you're not going to make people safe by, you know, hitting them with Narcan when they overdose and letting them run off. You know, we really do need to consider a bear hug approach, really. I mean, I've, I've talked about suicide in a similar manner. You know, suicide, if you attempt suicide, it's illegal to do it. Because it's an opportunity for the state and the city and the community to intervene and say, we want you here. And the only way we can make sure that you're here is, you know, by making it illegal. It's a, it's an, it's an intervention point, right? In public health, we talk about intervention points. You know, when we talk about overdoses, that's an intervention point. What do we do? And we need to find a way to address it with humanity and compassion and, and seriousness. You know, you won't find me saying, uh, you know, defund the police because we're gonna need them.
Is that a thing, is that an attack line that is common in St. Paul like it is in Minneapolis? Like if you're a progressive candidate, this person's a defunder, they want to abolish the police. Is that what people say?
I mean, you can ask the folks who are sending me hate mail all the time, they certainly seem to think so.
They have you pegged as that candidate.
Yeah, and then, you know, like I said, my dad was a police officer. You know, I have no interest in, in, you know, ripping away the police department and throwing it in the bin because violent crime is real. You know, a lot of people critique leftists for saying, well, crime in cities isn't real, crime, well, no, it is. It's a part of everyday life. It's how we respond that is different. You know, how do we respond? You know, my dad, the one thing that I would always say is, I'm not a social worker. He would go to a domestic call, he'd go to some sort of, some sort of challenging situation and he would be unequipped to handle the challenges there because he was trained to be a police officer, to deal with violent situations, to do parking, you know, traffic enforcement, those sorts of things. So if we're not even giving our first responders the tools to do the job we're asking them to do, then how can we succeed, expect them to succeed? How can we expect to have a safer community for everybody? That's the approach I'm bringing, is we need to bring everything to the table. We need to talk about mental health. We need to talk about, you know, substance use recovery. We need to talk about communications around, you know, how do you, how do you report things you see on the train? You know, people need to feel comfortable calling 911. And in the wake of George Floyd's murder, people are very nervous about calling the police. Even in our neighborhood, they don't want, they don't want Midway to be next. The next ground zero for something like that. We already, we're still living in the shadow of the uprising in a lot of ways.
So, uh, tell, tell us what distinguishes you from the other candidates. There are four candidates in this race, including you. How are you different? Oh, what, what are the people not getting with the others that they get from you? I want a real hard-hitting, these people are awful, I'm the best.
That's what you want.
Give me one of those style answers.
All right.
No, just tell me like, lay it out in very clear terms for people because a lot of people will just use buzzwords in a question like this.
Absolutely. Well, here's the deal. We're dealing with a public health crisis in St. Paul when it comes to opioid overdoses. And there's not a single person in City Hall who sits on City Council or sits in the mayor's office who is a public health professional and has worked with the people who are suffering. You know, I have been at encampments, support meetings, I've done mutual aid. I've been at encampment evictions. That's actually the first place I met Melvin Carter. I met Mayor Carter at an encampment eviction. You know, I mean, there's, there's no one in this race who has spent more time in the neighborhood addressing the problems of the neighborhood than I have. You know, I know the folks who are at the corner. You know, I know the folks who are at City Hall trying to make this city a better place. I have Sean Kershaw's number on my phone. I've had it for years. It's, do you want somebody who can start the job on the right foot right away? Or do you want somebody who's going to be spending a lot of time making relationships, spending a lot of time working on policy briefs? You know, these things are already done. Our neighbors are already telling us what they want to do. And I facilitated those meetings because I've been doing this work for years. It's not an issue of, you know, qualification. Everybody's qualified in their own way. But I don't think you need to go to college somewhere else or have years of business experience to be the best candidate for this race. You need to know what's going on. And you need to have the expertise and honestly, the, the energy and commitment to do it. I'm answering all of my, you know, I'm answering emails from, from people who want to vote or people are just curious about my policy, same day. You know, I write my communications myself. Everybody who says they're undecided at a door, I'm calling them personally to ask for their vote. Because that's what democracy means to me. It means getting in your face. It's a contact sport. I want to hear from you. You know, if you don't want to talk to me, that's fine. You know, whatever, I get it. We're all busy people. But if you do have a concern, if you have something you want from the city, like I'm gonna be asking you. I want to know. Because we can't make this thing work if you don't believe that it can work. If you don't believe the city can deliver. And I know it can. I'm a real believer. I know the city can deliver for everyday people. But it's gotta have the right people in the right rooms and I'm, I'm that person in this race.
Well, one thing I can tell you about Cole Hansen, and I don't know if this is a good thing or a bad thing, is I would not be covering the Ward 4 City Council race in St. Paul if you had not contacted me. Because then I felt compelled, well, if I say, I said yes to you and I mean, oh no, how many candidates are there? And I looked it up and it's like, there are three more. Oh. And it's a bike ride. I'm going on a bike ride with one of the other ones. This is going to be a lot of work for me. So this is a plug for patreon.com/ WedgeLive. This is so much work. But Cole Hansen, thank you for bringing me over to St. Paul, although we're in Minneapolis right now. Bold choice to bring us back to Minneapolis for half of this ride.
Well, hey, here's the thing. These are the Twin Cities. You know, we gotta solve these problems together. You know, Ward 4 sits right against Minneapolis. If you guys are having trouble on the light rail, we are too. If you guys are having trouble on the bridges, you're having trouble with mass transit, we are too. I don't see them as separate places. We need to work together and it's, uh, it's a lot more fun that way.
Yeah, I refer to Ward 4 as the Ward 10 of St. Paul because it stretches from swanky to far less swanky is the way I put it.
Well, we've got, we've got a lot fewer wards, so we have a lot more opportunity for the real spread, that's true. But, uh, no, I mean, I reached out to you because I think it is so important for folks, you know, in Minneapolis and your audience to, to understand that we are in this together. You know, when we talk about the challenges from the federal government, you know, what the Trump administration is doing, I mean, they're snatching our kids and our neighbors, right? We're not going to succeed in protecting everyday people if we're going our own way. And we need to have coordinated responses and that starts at the neighborhood level, that starts with folks, you know, you and me. That's out of the City Council, that's in the mayor's office. We've got to work together because we're all we've got.
Okay, well, thank you, Cole Hansen, uh, City Council candidate in Ward 4 in St. Paul. When is the special election? What's the date?
August 12th.
And early voting is happening?
It's a special election. There's, early voting's already happening, but this is it. This is not going in November. It's just on August 12th.
Okay, well, uh, stay tuned for more episodes coming shortly. I don't know when this will air, but I'm your host, John Edwards. This has been the Wedge Live Podcast. Youtube.com/ WedgeLive to watch us ride bikes. Thank you for listening and watching.